And we are live.
Okay, good evening. Today is Tuesday, September 15th. We're having a virtual planning board meeting. Before we get started, I have a couple of announcements. First of all, I'd ask anyone in the audience that's attending via Zoom to mute your audio and turn it on only when you're speaking, just so we don't get any background noise. The other thing is that the listed agenda items are reasonably anticipated by the chair to be discussed at the meeting. Public hearings cannot commence before the specific time. The board may address and consider other matters that are not specified by the consent permitted by law. So normally, we would have the agenda items set, you know, one at 7:30, another one at 7:45. If we finish one agenda item, we've changed it so we can actually jump onto the next one and not have to sit. So, and that being said, the first item that we have is a special permit for with site plan approval. Public hearing continued for McDonald's. This was to be continued without discussion per applicant's request to the next meeting at 10:13, 20:00. The next item on the agenda-
Excuse me, one sec, Rich. You still have to read the public hearing notice and then make a motion to continue without discussion.
Oh, okay, fair enough. Yeah. Nicole?
Sorry about that.
Nicole, we can't hear you.
No. I can read it, Nicole, if you can.
I've got it here if you want.
You got it, George? Yeah, do you mind reading it?
Yeah. Opposite of the planning board, notice of public hearing. In accordance with the provisions of NGL Chapter 48, Section 11, the planning board will hold a remote public hearing on Tuesday, 9/15/2020 via Zoom platform. The agenda with login information will be posted in the planning board's webpage. Forty-eight hours prior to the public hearing, McDonald's Real Estate Company, 110 North Carpenter Street, Chicago, Illinois, is requesting a special permit under Section 13, Special Permit Conditions, Paragraph C, Site Plan Review of the Zoning Bylaw of the Town of Millis, Section 12, Point Q, Section 5, Use Regulations to Raise and Rebuild Existing McDonald's Restaurant Located at 808 Main Street, Millis, Mass. Assessors Map 24, Parcel 3. A copy of the application and site plan is on file in the office of the town clerk. Anyone interested or wishing to be heard shall appear at the time and place designated. Richard Nichols, Chair.
All right, and as I said earlier, this was, we were asked to continue this to our next meeting on October 13th without comments. So I make a motion that we continue the public hearing.
I got a second.
All right, motion's made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Passed. Thank you.
That will be continued to 10:13 at 7:30 PM.
Yep, great, thank you. Okay, the next item is a special permit with site plan approval, public hearing for Robert Silvian, Millbrook Sparhawk Academy, construction of a school building. Dan Marican will be presenting that. Let's see, Nicole, you still are unable to read the notice?
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now. Yeah, can you read the notice?
Okay.
All right.
Perfect.
Great, thank you.
Town of Millis Office of the Planning Board, Notice of Public Hearing. In accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 11, the planning board will hold a remote public hearing on Tuesday, September 15th, 2020 at 7:35 PM via Zoom platform. The agenda login information will be posted on the planning board's website forty-eight hours prior to the public hearing. The Millbrook School Foundation Incorporated, 376 Orchard Street, Millis, Mass., is requesting a special permit application for site plan approval to construct a school building along the driveway, parking, stormwater systems, et cetera, at 376 Orchard Street. Sparhawk Academy, Millis, Mass. Assessors Map 9, Parcel 1. A copy of the application and site plan is on file in the office of the town clerk and on the planning board's webpage. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should appear at the time and place designated. Richard Nichols, Chair.
Great, thank you. So, Dan, do you want to go ahead and walk through this?
Sure, I'm going to pop the screen up of the plan up on the screen. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Dan Marican with Legacy Engineering here on behalf of Sparhawk Academy. Sparhawk Academy is located at 376 Orchard Street. You guys might recall that they appeared, we appeared before you, maybe a year and a half ago, two years ago, requesting site plan waiver to convert what was essentially an existing old farm property into a property.
I already boiled the water.
So that was done in the school. Right now, the property is 59 acres of land. It's split between Sherburne and Millis. The Sherburne portion of the land is completely undeveloped. The Millis portion of the land, as you can see on the plan, is an old farm. There's a lot of fields, a couple of horse paddocks, old horse paddocks. Then there's your old farmhouse, an old barn, and an old garage. And those structures were converted to classrooms and office space within the last year and a half or so. And the school is operational, and they have students there. And when I appeared before you last, I indicated to you that coming down the road, they were planning to build an additional school building. And that's why we're here before you tonight. So this is, again, this is the portion of the property that is closest to Orchard Street. This is the old house, which is now a classroom and office building. This is the old garage, which is now a classroom. And this is the old barn, which is just an activity area for the school. What the school would like to do is to install a one-story building here for additional classroom space, 7,500 square feet, with a little porch on two sides of it. And then they would come in off the existing gravel road, and they would circulate a new gravel driveway down and around the building and tie into some other existing gravel driveways down in this area. And then we are proposing six paved parking spaces. So they're paved, basically, to indicate, you know, to provide for accessible parking spaces. The rest of the driveways in the property are gravel. We have shown them as gravel right now. As you can imagine, the new school doesn't have a lot of funds. They would eventually plan to pave this new driveway. We have designed it for pavement, but at present, we are proposing that it be gravel for the time being, which is what all the other driveways in the property are presently. I wouldn't know that this is a Dover Amendment use, which basically means it's exempt from a lot of zoning requirements. It's a school, just like any of the town's public schools. This is a private, nonprofit educational corporation. So it does fall under the Dover Amendment. There's not a lot to the proposal. We have the circulating driveway, the building, the parking areas. Stormwater management is something that we're working with beta on. They've generated some comments, but basically, our proposal is, out in the field here, we're proposing to install a stormwater basin. And one of the comments that Beta noted was they'd like to see a more formalized swale system to capture runoff. So we're in the process of designing that now. Have a drainage swale that'll run along the driveway and then basically run all the way down to the stormwater basin. And the stormwater basin, as I indicated, lies in an existing field. We're not, we're not going to have to clear any wooded areas to do any of this work. There are a few. There's an old apple orchard up in this area, but it's not wooded per se. It's basically a field and a portion of an old paddock area. We are bringing municipal water into the site for the new building. We have a new septic system that was built last year that was designed with this building in mind. So it's already in place and ready to accept flow from the new building. So that's about it. This is just an initial presentation to the board. We're in the process of working on addressing Beta's comments, and we'll be submitting a revision package with a response letter shortly. So I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have. And then after that, we would seek a continuance to your next meeting.
Hold on, let me figure out where I am. Sorry. Oh, there I am. I am unmuted. Okay, there we are, sorry. So the only one comment was that there was a letter that was sent in by a neighbor with concern about making that a designated school zone. And so with that, we're not necessarily sure that it's required by law. Could you just walk through how the traffic would flow through there? There won't be any kids getting dropped off in the street. It'll basically be, how would the traffic go through there, Dan?
Yeah, all traffic will enter the property through the existing driveway and then would circulate around this driveway. And it's a big loop in and out. And we actually prepared, two years ago, when we did the, we had a zoning application, we had the site plan application, the waiver request before the board, we actually prepared us a traffic study, which I could resubmit to the board, which basically addressed traffic impacts and indicated that, you know, there are adequate site distances and, you know, the driveway as it exists is adequate for the development. I did see the comment letter. My response to that would be, it's not the applicant's, it's not in the applicant's control to designate a school zone. I believe that is something that the Millis Police Department would have to do. And if they wanted to do that, that obviously would be no problem at all. But, you know, Orchard Street is a public way. It's under the control of the town. And I believe that the police department would have to conclude that that was appropriate given the use. Now, this is a, this is a small, a pretty small facility at present. There's only 30 or 40 students there. Obviously, it will grow with time. That could be something that obviously could be left open so that the police department could determine whenever they felt it was appropriate to designate that as a school zone.
So I, I think that's an interesting thought. I think maybe this is something that we could look at further down the road. Because right now, I drive by it, and I think I've seen vehicles, you know, once or twice in the whole time I drive by. I drive by there every day. So, you know, I'm not sure that there's gaggles of children walking up and down the street or cars driving in there.
You don't notice a lot of activity because it is small. But, you know, at some point, I would think it would become appropriate for the police department to determine, to decide that, you know, that putting some signage up designated as a school zone for reduced speeds on Orchard Street would be appropriate.
All right, I didn't have any other comments. I did, unless, does somebody on the board have any comments? Because if not, I'd like to let Melissa, you had the person that worked on that, just wanted to briefly go through any of the items that were, that jumped out at you that would be worthwhile to address. I think Dan kind of walked through them quickly.
Yes, you know, Dan gave his description. I do have Mary Beth on the call, too. She helped me out with the peer reviews. I wanted to include her tonight. Just a couple things, I guess. I'm sure Dan's working on the responses, but we had a couple comments on, you know, there's not any lighting included. Is that something that's being considered along the driveway for this project? And then we had some questions about just providing the classroom numbers and sizing to verify. Obviously, there's a lot of real estate here for parking and whatnot, but we were looking for a little more detail on how many classrooms there were to confirm parking, parking count, things like that. Were a couple items we commented on. I don't know if those are things you want to talk about tonight, Dan, or if that's something you're just going to address in, in your comment letter.
That's, we're working on pulling all that information together for you.
Okay.
Yeah, so I mean, I don't, I don't think that any of that warrants any detailed discussion tonight until you see what we have to offer from, from the revised plans and the input from the school.
Okay. Yeah, I think at this point, you know, our comments are pretty self-explanatory and we'll wait for the responses and the revised plans.
All right, great. Great. So, thank you, Melissa. So as long as no one else says any comment, we will continue the public hearing till-
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I would just like to request, so that Mr. Hamill knows that the letter that he sent to us has been considered, I would like to request that the planning board forward this to the Chief of Police, since it is their jurisdiction, not ours, that we officially forwarded to them and notify the resident that we have done that and that the appropriate place for them to discuss this would be with the police department.
Nope, that's a good, that's a great point. Yes, we should do that. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure if any members of the public are here that want to ask questions.
I can't see, but are there any members of the public that want to speak? I don't know how to get out of the full screen thing.
I can do that.
Oh, there we go. Nope, there we go. So is there anyone that's interested? All right, I don't see anybody at this point in time. So, all right, so I make a motion that we continue the public hearing. Dan, you'll be ready for the next one?
I will.
Okay, I make a motion that we continue the special permit for 376 Orchard Street, Sparhawk Academy till October 13th.
At 7:35.
At 7:35.
Second.
All right, the motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Okay, all right, the next item on the road, sorry, next item on the agenda is Scenic Road, public hearing. Mike and Tina G. Pietro, 121 Orchard Street, removal replacement portion of a stone wall for a single-family dwelling. So he sent some pictures. I actually drive by the location every day on my way home because I drive down Orchard Street.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, we have to open the public hearing.
No, no. Oh, yeah, we should open, yeah, open the hearing. Yes, sorry. Go ahead. Can you read the public hearing, please?
Town of Millis Office of the Planning Board, Notice of Public Hearing. Under the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 15C, Scenic Roads, and Mass. General Law, Chapter 87, Section 3, a remote public hearing will be held on Tuesday, September 15th, 2020 at 7:40 PM via Zoom platform. The agenda with login information will be posted on the planning board's website forty-eight hours prior to the planning, public hearing. An application was filed by Michael and Tina G. Pietro, 12 Lawrence Street, Milford, Mass., 01757, requesting written consent of the planning board pursuant to the Scenic Road Rules and Regulations of the Town of Millis for removal and replacement of a stone wall for work associated with a proposed dwelling at 121 Orchard Street. Assessors Map 6, Parcel 22. A copy of the application and site plan is on file with the office of the town clerk and on the planning board's webpage. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should appear at the time and place designated. Richard Nichols, Chair.
Thank you. So anyhow, I drive, actually drive past that also on my way home. And we also had photos sent out from the applicant. The wall in that area is about one stone high, and it goes off into what is now brush. So they just want to take a section of it out and put a driveway. So it doesn't seem like it would be, it wouldn't be that much of a loss of wall. I know the town likes to maintain the stone walls, but like I said, at this point in time, it's literally about a wall, about one rock above grade, and then it drops off behind it. So I don't know if anyone else has taken a look by, but, George, do you familiar with the area? Or it's across from the Yellow House?
I am familiar with it, and I'll drive by tomorrow probably, but I don't see any issues with it.
All right, so I make a motion that we, unless there's any comment from the public. And I don't see anyone. Alan, that's not on your end of town. You probably haven't come over this side of town.
Not in a while. I used to live a few doors down from there. I lived at 189 Orchard for-
Okay, so it's the, it's the Yellow House with the barn next to it?
Yeah.
And it's, yeah, it's, the wall's in tough shape, so.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I make a motion that we approve the removal replacement portion of the-
Excuse me, Rich, you have to close the public hearing first?
Oh, sorry. Okay.
You're in a rush tonight.
I am in a rush. I haven't eaten dinner yet. So I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. So now-
Now you can vote to approve.
I make a motion that we approve the removal replacement portion of a section of stone wall on 121 Orchard Street.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor? And we'll do this by count, aye?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Oh, Boda. I forgot Boda, Boda. Boda's not moving.
I think Boda's green for us.
Oh, we lost Boda.
I don't see any audio. I see video, but no audio for Boda.
Boda?
There he is. Yes, sir.
Are you in favor of taking out that section? Yes?
Okay. Yes, I am okay. If you people are okay, I am okay.
Okay, great.
I'm not here.
Okay, great, thank you.
I trust you people, my friends.
Okay. All right, great. So it was all in favor. Thank you. All right, so the next item on the agenda scheduled for 7:50 would be 1512 Main Street Self-Storage, Revised Architectural Building Elevations. That would be from Dan Marican. And we don't see Dan there.
I'm here. Sorry, Mr. Chairman. I'm just getting the plans ready for you. Dan Marican again on behalf of the applicant. I'm just going to pop up the plans for you. So this is for, if you might recall, we appeared before you not too long ago for 1475, 1485, and 1512 Main Street, which is down near the Medway Town Line. There's existing self-storage on 1475 and 1485, and on 1512, it's vacant. That was an old gas station. So the applicant has been preparing to move forward with construction of the smaller building at 1512, which is the old gas station. And I think, as you are all well aware, the economy is not in great shape, and they've had to make some changes to the exterior design of the building in order to make it financially viable. And they were uncomfortable moving forward without presenting their changes to the board and getting at least an acknowledgement that you're okay with these changes. I don't know that we need anything formal necessarily, but this is the new plan. It was always intended to be a one-story self-storage building. The red doors that you see in the front are just a faux facade. It's all internal. The existing self-storage buildings across the street are staying. They are all external overhead doors, where you rent the unit, you pull up to your door, you walk in. And this, this is an internal self-storage facility where you'd walk in one of these pedestrian doors on either end of the building, and all of the storage units are inside the building. The footprint of the building is the same. You know, the site plan design doesn't change at all, but the architectural considerations do change. This is what the architect had originally conceived of. You can see it's, it looks nice, but it proved to be prohibitively expensive. So what the applicant is requesting, and I have Norm Kotash here representing the applicant with me tonight, the applicant's basically seeking, I guess, an acknowledgement from the board that these changes to the exterior architecture are okay and that they can move forward. Unfortunately, if, you know, if, if they were not okay to the planning board, the project likely would not advance because, again, the original design, architects love to design great-looking stuff, but oftentimes very expensive, and that's the case here. It's just the, the economics of this building do not work unless they can change the appearance of the building. So this is not very different than what's down there. This is newer and nicer than what's across the street. It's going to look a lot like the existing self-storage buildings directly across the street at 1485 Main Street. And that's all I have.
Dan, so on that, could you, let's, so on the front of that, you had, they had plantings. We had some, didn't we have some, like, you had some plantings in the front to hide it and planters and-
Yeah, there's a little landscape strip in the front. That's not changing. This is basically just how the exterior shell of the building is being constructed.
Right. So is the-
It was always anticipated to be a metal building. It's just that there's going to be less, you know, architectural detail on the front side of the building than they hoped to be able to provide.
Could you go back to the other one, just so we can see?
Yep. This is the architect's rendering of the front. It's basically, there's a, there's a whole faux facade here in the front that ended up being just too costly to undertake. It's the same kind of look. You know, you have the faux doors. These are not real overhead doors. These are just faux, false doors, just to almost advertise the, the purpose of the building. And then you have a pedestrian entrance left and right. You know, it's not, it's not that different. We just, we're eliminating the parapet. We're eliminating a lot of the material changes that ended up being too expensive for the project.
Could you go back to the new one for me, please?
Yep.
So the only thing with that is, I know we wanted to save money. Would the face of that is what we're looking at where the red is?
Yeah, that's the front.
Okay. So like we did with McDonald's, I mean, you can't do anything here. Is there any way you could make, I mean, right now, it looks like a, it looks like a flat metal box.
Well, if I, can I interject for a moment?
Yep.
Norm Kotash with NAK Management Consulting. There, it's not showing in this picture, but there is a, I think, a five-foot landscape bed all along the actual front of the facade here. It's not shown in this picture. So there will be plantings. He won't, I mean, so for example, between the man door on the right, or person door, I should say, if you're correct, and the first faux door, there will be plantings as well as on the other side, correct, by the, it looks like a yellow VW Beetle down there. So there will be some elevation. There'll be some height. It won't just be a flat building. Unfortunately, we didn't have that put into here, but if you look at the drawings, it does show the landscape bed. And there's also a landscape island out by the street that I think is shown in the drawing on the aerial to the right.
Yeah, we have street trees along the frontage.
In addition, those doors are not just flat white, white, they are, are flat red. They are, they do have a texture to them, so to speak. Not a texture, but they're, they're roll-up doors. And those are lights above them for at night to offer a downlighting on. It'll be a very nice effect at night. So unfortunately, this is not the most flattering picture we could have provided, but again, it probably should have had a landscape architect put in there with some, some drawings, what the actual shrubs will be, will look like. So, so I agree, it does need landscaping, and that parking lot does not go all the way to the building. There is that bed there.
Okay, I mean, that, that, that is a little, makes it a little better. And it is, that area has, already is, is pretty industrial. So, okay, so that, I think that explained it. Well, George, what is your thought on that?
One of my questions is, there seems to be a door at each end, a people door. How do you get product, product or goods in and out of the building through those two doors?
Those two doors, yeah. You can get anything through those. Those are, I believe, 48-inch wide doors. They're five-foot hallways. They're actually larger than any home. So you can get, things as large as sofas through there. It's, it's standard throughout the- They're actually larger than any home, so you can get uh, things as large as sofas through there. It's, it's standard throughout the country, quite, quite honestly. Um, so uh, yeah, they're, they're, they're not standard doors. They're extra-wide doors.
George, yeah, with that, we have, we have, for our company, we have a storage place that we put stuff in while we were waiting to build the house, and that's, that's how they have it. The Cube, uh, not Cube Smart, but there's another one. Um, and that's how they have. They have a big door. They have carts. They roll them in, so.
So there's, there's nothing in the back of the building that you'd be, like loading docks or anything like that?
No, no.
Okay.
No.
Okay. What color is it other than red? Is it gray?
Um.
It's a gray, grayish-green color. I don't know that they made that precise.
It won't be green. It won't be green. A-actually, it's, it's probably closer to a, gonna be a white and 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 red. Um. I don't think it's gonna be green. It won't, green will not be the color.
And how big is this building?
The total square footage is around eight thousand square feet.
Okay, so it's small.
Yes.
Yeah, it's a small building.
So it, it's a steel building now?
It's al, it's always been a steel building.
Okay.
It always was.
Okay.
All right, has anyone else have any comments? George, I assume you're all set?
No, I'm all set.
Mr. Chair, I did have one comment.
Go ahead, Josh.
Um, real quick, I can't, just bring them up to speed if I've forgotten, um signage. So on the prior, obviously, there was an elevation, and you had the little parapet with Cube Smart advertising. Are we changing or altering any signage that was planned to be out?
Um, that's a good question. Is it permitted between the decorative door and the person door to the right? Or or the, or the left, either side? Is there, I don't, I've not looked into what is allowable, the square foot.
You could do a, you could do a smaller wall sign on, on this facade or that facade over there under zone.
Is that, is that something we have to apply for at a later date, or can that be approved at this point?
It'll be part of the building permit application.
Okay.
You know, now that you eliminated the big parapet with the, with the, you know, Cube Smart on it, yeah, you'll have to decide on what you wanna do for a signage package presented to the building inspector.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Um, Nicole, sorry, I heard you pipe up.
Um, just one quick question, going back to what George was saying about the orange. Is the, is that reddish-orange, is that part of the Cube Smart, their colors?
Yes.
Or would it be?
Yes, if you're familiar with Cube Smart, it's uh, it's not orange, it's not, it's, it's more of a I guess it's, I guess it's red.
No, I was just curious if that was part of your company's colors, or was that something um, that maybe we those doors.
Cube Smart.
Done it white, but if that's your color, low, you know.
Yeah, Cube Smart is, is the management company. Um, I, I'm a consultant. Cube Smart is the management company. Mary Hill is the owner, to confuse me even more. So, uh, but they're, Cube Smart is a management company, so they market this under the Cube Smart name and logos and and websites. So everything is uniform to the Cube Smart colors, and that red is, is the Cube Smart color. And honestly, it may be uh, i-if not white, closer to like a lighter beige. It won't be green. Um, I, I can tell you that. Um, so if it's either gonna be white or 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 like a beige-ish, lighter beige, it won't be green.
Okay, that was my only question.
Yeah.
Other questions? Oh, go ahead, Alan. Thank you. Uh, how many storage units are in this building?
I can't recall offhand. I don't have the floor plan in front of me.
Approximately?
Uh, probably around fifty or sixty.
And is it attended?
No. This is just, the attended offices across the street on the north side.
Yeah, so.
That's only attended Monday through Sun, or seven days a week, uh, from, I think, ten till six PM. No one lives on site there, but the main office and restrooms are across the street.
How many parking spaces?
Sorry?
What, how many parking spaces? We've already been through that, Alan. We walked through that already, so.
Yeah, there's a, Alan, there's a, there's an approved site plan for this that has all the parking on it. You can see it. You can see it kind of here. It's graphically depicted, but there's an approved site plan that has, we have angled parking spaces across the front. We have trees across the front. We have a whole drainage system designed for this. Uh, across the street are existing uh self-storage buildings, kind of similar to this, that are gonna remain. And then there's a smaller building across the street. That smaller building presently is gonna be used as the office in the intervening time for all of these facilities. The whole Cube Smart complex here until this building is um, is built. This, this building is a larger building. It's a three-story building. It's something that was approved as part of the original site plan. This was just a small one-story building that was proposed for that vacant lot at fifteen twelve.
If, if I might add, as, as Dan alluded to earlier, um, when we did get our, our approval, um, and then we had to put, obviously bid this thing out. Um, as Dan mentioned, architects are very good at spending other people's money, so when we actually bid it out, it was, there's no way this was gonna work, and and quite honestly, it's marginal. It's just more expensive for some reason. Uh, I think it's the site work that's, that's creating the, the cost, but um, rather than just changing it, uh, ownership wanted to respect Mil, uh, the city of Millis and take it back to you to, to get your, your consent, to, to say, hey, look, we, this is what you approved. We have to change it to this. Is that okay? So.
Great. So Norm, on that, and that note, what we'd like to say is, um, all you're looking for us is us to just, uh, do you want us to take a vote on it, or what? Because at this point.
Uh, yeah, if you, if you could, just take a vote this way. Ownership i-is comfortable moving forward with this, that you've, they, you've gotten, uh, they've gotten your blessing, and uh, and we're ready to sign tomorrow. The contractor's ready to go. We wanted to wait, quite frankly, um, the several weeks to this hearing to get your, your final blessing, so just, whatever, if you, if you could do that, it'd be.
Yeah, well, it'd be great.
Okay, all right. So if there's no other comment, I make a motion that we uh approve the um, the architectural changes uh to the Cube Smart, um, the Cube Smart um, storage facility at fifteen, uh, fifteen twelve Main Street.
Second.
I heard a second. All right, uh, all in favor? Let's do it by count. Uh, so I'm an aye.
Aye.
George? Nicole?
Aye.
Boda?
The internet is not working nice today. I'm not hearing. The public has no problem. My colleagues, they don't have any problem. I'm okay.
Okay, great. Uh, Josh?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
Great, thank you. All right, um, so that's all set. Um, so the next item from Dan Marican is a uh discussion.
By the way, before I sign off, I wanna thank you guys for your time. Appreciate it.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you, bye.
I'm, I'm not sure who's new, but whoever just signed on, could you please mute?
Greg Whalen.
Okay. Thank you. Um, so the next item on the thing is the expansion of the MCEOD mixed-use zoning district discussion uh from Dan Marican.
I would acknowledge you.
And.
Um, I'm gonna pop up the uh zoning map here for you guys to just look at. Okay, so um, I'm here, kind of unofficially, I guess. Uh, I've been, I've been approached by a couple of people who are looking to do some development slash redevelopment work um, down in the Pleasant Street area, and um, one of the properties is the vacant lot on the corner of Hammond and Main Street. The um, the second property, so that's over here, right, a kind of opposite from the bowling alley. The second property is the old Buddha Bings. Um, the owner of the Buddha Bing site wanted to, is interested in doing a mixed-use development. You know, with commercial on the first floor and residential units on the second floor, and unfortunately, that whole block is zone CB, Commercial Village, where residential is not permitted. And, you know, the downtown area here is zone CB as well with the MCEOD, the Millis Center Economic Overlay District on top of it, and that allows by special permit the opportunity at least to seek, to do things like a mixed-use development. And it, it, it seems to me that from a, a, a planning strategy, that it would, might be nice to extend the MCEOD over this section of CB as well. You know, you have the downtown where mixed use is, is allowed residentially. This in the middle is a residential zone. It's your multifamily zone. Um, and then you have this patch of CB before you get into your industrial districts. So I'm here, you know, because these two, these two interested parties are looking to do something along the lines of a mixed-use development on a couple of pieces of property that um, could uh definitely use development and redevelopment. And I think this would be a great way to kind of um encourage development of these, uh, the, the piece on the corner of Hammond has been vacant forever and ever and ever. Uh, and obviously, the, the Buddha Bing's parcel, when the fire burned down the building, was a loss, and it would be nice to do something really great on that corner. So the MCEOD overlay would really, I think, uh, provide a lot more diverse opportunity to do something really nice on these properties, and that, of course, would require a change to zoning. So um, I think uh placeholder has been, you know, been put in on the fall town meeting warrant, and if the planning board was interested in this, I certainly would assist the board, but we would, we think it would be smoothest and easiest if the board uh were interested that they would um petition a warrant article to extend the MCEOD over this section of CB in the Pleasant Street, Hammond Lane area. I would, you know, be happy to assist in that process and draft language and, you know, work with town council to get the paperwork together, whatever the case may be for that, but I, I wanted to present this idea to you and see what the board thought, and then see if that's something that you would be interested in sponsoring and supporting.
Um, so uh, Dan, with that, um, Bob Weiss wanted to, we had a, uh, uh, he called and knowing that this was gonna be on the uh, on the uh, agenda for tonight, so Bob had a few comments that he wanted to make.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman, and um, yeah, Bob Weiss, uh, I am uh, Millis's Economic Development Director and uh, Planning Director. Um, it, the, the, well, first of all, generally, the, the idea of a mixed-use uh development uh at a commercial node that is all of a six-minute walk uh from the town center is uh, you know, it's, it's, it's a great idea. It's got a lot of potential, certainly. Um, the uh, MCEOD, uh, as I think most, uh, most of the board probably is aware, was uh, came in in two thousand and four. It's been amended a few times. That came in as a recommendation from the master plan of uh two thousand. Uh, the idea for that was to redevelop a geographic area of the town center um, into a village center by uh cre-creating more density, uh, making it a more, a livelier place. Um, a couple of, but that, this brings in a, a couple of questions. What we, what we wanna do here, uh, Dan, I think what, what you're, was, you're saying is either expand uh the current, the current MCEOD from where it is now, Auburn Street, out to Hammond Lane? Correct?
Correct.
Or, or, or just have a.
It would, it would skip over the RT zone here, and it would basically, I mean, you could include these properties if you want. In, in the bylaw, it's a list of assessors' parcels. It's not necessarily a an overlay over a specific zoning district, so we certainly could include some of these parcels in here, but I would think it would make sense to extend it over this entire CV area, you know, which encompasses the, the Pleasant Street, Main Street intersection and the Hammond Lane, Main Street intersection.
Um, it, well, two things come up. Uh, the first is uh rezoning um, a district for a uh, development, a single development or a couple of developments. Um, I, I don't want it to be perceived as something like spot zoning, which is, one, uh, it is allowed. This state looks badly upon it. It's um, I don't know of any communities that like to do spot zoning. Um, it's, it sets a precedent, which allows, you know, if you can do it, then why can't somebody else do it? And um, so then it becomes kind of a, a, a legal thing, but I, as, as you say, we, we can work with uh town council uh on this. The second thing is, uh, we are now, uh, we have applied to, to mass development for a new planning process for town center. Um, and um, we'll be hearing about that uh grant probably in a, in a few weeks. We're gonna try to redesign, redefine town center. This all brings up a, a number of questions, and uh, you know, would, like, would a mixed-use district here detract from the MCEOD as it exists now? Um, the area that you're talking about, I, I went up to the area, I've been up to the area about three ti, three or four times now since, since I first heard about it. I mean, it's, it's an exciting thing to think about. Um, it's, it's zoned, I think it's zoned commercial, CV, and also residential. So my first question is, is have you spoken to, to the neighbors, the commercial neighbors and the Farm Street residential neighbors? Um, it, it's, that's more of a rhetorical question, really. So rezoning in, an area like that to fit development, I think is gonna bring some problems. We're, we're looking at rezoning it now. I, I'd be very happy uh to work with Dan and the team, along with town council, um, see if I can find some consultants that we know who can find perhaps another pathway, because my, my feeling is that if we go to uh the town meeting with something like this that hasn't been, you know, fully supported and fully vetted in the next couple of weeks, um, it's not gonna go over well. And I would rather we work together on something and vet it out a little more and perhaps go in at, at the Springtown meeting.
Yeah, Bob, and on that one, um, I, I think I agree with you, um, that uh, you know, I, I agree. I think that expanding the MCOD is a great idea. I, I'm not sure the, where the lines were drawn that, you know, we may wanna change that a bit, and I think the public input is going to be, you know, necessary for that. So um, you know, I, I personally think that, you know, I'm, I'm amicable to it. I think that we need to, um, we don't wanna rush into it. Um, so I, that would be my, my push, um, and I'd like to have the other members of the board weigh in on that. Uh, George? You're muted, George. George? George, you're still muted.
Yeah, okay, that, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay. Um, I could go either way. I, and I, I, I agree with Bob that you don't wanna do a spot zoning thing. We gotta be careful how we do it. And I agree with Dan. Um, I think both of those parcels, if they, particularly if they were mixed-use, where you had some, uh, particularly the old Buddha Bings, that would be a nice retail um, and, you know, apartments involved, and then maybe at that point, um, the guy that owns, um, who's doing it may even do the the places um, across, you know, where the gym is and where the tattoo parlor is. You could also build that up and put apartments upstairs, which now you're in the center of town, and that was one of the original aspects of this, particularly with um Jeff Harden. He wanted to do this years and years ago. Um, so um, the, the corner on Hammond Lane, I think, um, I mean, I don't wanna see a dollar store there. I'd love to see some um, over fifty-five housing, something light-duty. Uh, maybe one-level type of thing. I think that would, that would work well there, because the, the older people could walk right downtown and they can go bowling. But I think we need to work on it a little bit more, um, you know, and do it for, do it right so that we don't get a lot of problems. The, the, the corner of Hammond Lane, there aren't really any abutters to speak of, other than uh, commercial abutters, and they probably don't care one way or the other. So, but that's my theory.
Richard, you're muted.
Anyone else uh in the board have uh any uh comments they wanna make?
Uh, Mr. Chair did have.
Mr. Chair?
Oops, sorry, let's see, I'm going to go by seniority, so I'm going to let the call go.
Mr. Chair, thank you. I actually have a very different point of view from that. I do not consider the spot zoning because you're not changing the underlying zoning. It is currently commercial and it would remain commercial. The MCEOD is an overlay district and it is an option that would be given to an owner within that property to utilize under special permit. You're not changing the zones within a district, you're not changing a zone within a piece of a specific parcel. It is simply an overlay which provides additional use. It's a commercial district now. The MCEOD is not, it, it, I would have much bigger concern if we were, if you wanted to put the overlay in the residential area. Because now, even though that is, you know, a dozen homes, 15 homes in that little section with the condos, it's still residential. But if you're looking at what is currently that parcel, that is currently commercial and you're extending that overlay, I, I don't see that as spot zoning at all. I look at that completely different under the definition of what constitutes spot zoning. That's my opinion. I, that being said, I agree, I wouldn't want to see it, you know, rushed. I would like to make sure that the language was done appropriately and that we had sufficient meetings to allow the abutters, to allow especially those residents within that residential spot between Pleasant Street and Auburn Spring Street, the opportunity to be heard. But I do not consider that an issue with regards to the, it's an overlay, it's, it's, I, I don't think that's spot zoning.
Okay, great. Josh, what was your comment? You're muted too.
Yep. And so Nicole conveyed it much more succinctly than I would have, but that was essentially what I was going to address. And I was also just going to bring up our affordable housing initiative as a town as well. Obviously, you know, there are a lot of intricacies that go into that, but certainly when you update your zoning to facilitate those initiatives as well, certainly a positive. So it's just something to think about.
So that's great. So that's why we want to, I think that's part of the reason why we want to, we want to think about it and make sure that we, we get all the angles on that. So Alan, and your, your comment?
Yeah, my biggest concern is not knowing the details of the development grant that the town is receiving or hopefully will receive and what changes will occur as a result of that. I'd rather not see any changes until we look at the bigger picture.
You're muted, Richard. There we go, try that again. Boda, sorry.
Okay, sir. I couldn't help clearly. I couldn't hear you, that's why I can't say anything without studying. I'm out of now. I won't say anything now.
Okay.
So I'll just-
Yeah, I do too.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just, I'll just let you know that, you know, I have no problem with the board taking more time on this. But there are two parties actively interested in redevelopment right now. Butterbanks property and also in the corner of Hammond Lane. So I don't know, you know, if you want to, if you decide that you want to kind of push this off until, until spring, that'd be fine. Like you might lose, you know, the Hammond Lane person, that, that property's on the market. I was actually recently engaged to design a daycare for that corner and COVID killed that. So now it's back on the market. And somebody is coming to my office on Thursday to discuss the possibility of trying to do something mixed use on that corner. So it's kind of a hot, a hot iron in the fire. So it's obviously your decision about timing and how you want to proceed with this. There is a scenario where you could, you know, move forward with extending, it's kind of a simple thing to extend the MCEOD over that section of CV and then explore, you know, at a later date whether you might want to do something more nuanced there and change it or expand the MCEOD into residential areas. But I think as Nicole indicated, you know, it's, it's almost duplicating what you have downtown to just extend that MCEOD over that existing CV zone. So I'll, I'll defer to the board to, to conclude what you think is best from a planning and timing standpoint. And I'll-
Okay.
-conclude that to the parties who approach me.
Nicole, so going back to you on that, so it, actually I'm asking you a question. So on the MCEOD, if we did that, if we expanded that into, into that, and with that, they said they wanted to do mixed use. That would be bringing residential into commercial, that is not an issue.
Well, I don't see it as an issue. You know, I'm sure you could find somebody, if you look hard enough, that would have an issue, but-
Legally is the question, is what I'm asking.
No, you're, because that's what was done downtown before. Initially down along Main Street was at one point in time all commercial. It is still commercial. It simply has the overlay, which is literally you have this separate district that is laid on top of the commercial. The underlying zoning of commercial remains. So anyone, if the, if that extension was allowed, was voted upon at town meeting, if somebody came in and wanted to build commercial on that lot, they would have every right, anything that is accepted by right on commercial, they would go in. They wouldn't need a special permit. This, it adds, it provides for additional options. It doesn't change what's there, it adds to it. And I, I mean, I am not a fan of saying in September, let's, let's push something off. I would like to start, I, I think it's a great idea. I would like to start looking into it. I would be happy to meet with Dan, have some conversations with Dan and with town council at your approval and then bring someone for, something forward to the planning board. And if it was not going positively, if in the process it looked like there, it was going to take longer. But to say in September, yeah, let's just push it off to spring. I'd say, let, let's start looking now, let's start working on it, investigating it now and see what the next few weeks brings us.
Okay, the only, the only problem with that is that we, we have a deadline to get the, and Camille, could you help me out with that? When is that deadline that we, if there was anything, if we didn't want to, we have a placeholder, is it, what's the date that it'd have to be in by?
I'm not sure, the warrant closed last night. So I, I know there's a placeholder on for this, but it would also require approval, having to be sent to the select board, then sent back to us. Once something is, once an article is finalized and the planning board would have to hold a public hearing. So there's, there are other steps that obviously would have to take place. And I, I personally don't know whether that could happen before November. And they haven't set the town meeting date yet, I don't think. But that would probably require a conversation with the select board.
Mr. Chairman?
You go ahead.
Two points, I would be glad to call the town council tomorrow and we can set something up. And the date that the select board wants, set for their deadline is the 28th. So that does give us a little time to work on something.
And that would be this month?
Yes.
Okay, so, you know-
It's the 28th.
Yeah, the 28th. Unless the Board of Selectmen was interested in this and wanted to give us an extension, we're not going to get this to Board of Selectmen and then back for Camille to advertise and hold a, a public hearing in two weeks. But if, but it could be something if planning, if the Board of Selectmen is interested in, they could grant us an extension.
I'm wondering if, I'm wondering if what you need to have in by the 28th is the language of the article, which is something that could certainly happen. And then the public hearing could happen sometime in October, at your October meeting, or maybe you have a special meeting in October. But I, I agree with Ms. Riley that it's probably worth at least trying to explore the possibility in the next week or so to see if, if it could come together.
Okay, well, I'd be willing to, I'd be willing to take a shot. I would say, Nicole, the only thing is how would we, in, in the board, how would we, how would we go about this? I mean, if we have to have it in by the 28th, we'd, we'd probably have to have another meeting. Would that be correct?
Yeah. Once we were to, to develop the language, we would have to have a meeting, discuss the language, vote on, and then vote whether or not to send it to Board of Selectmen. And then Board of Selectmen would have a meeting as to whether they approved it. And if they approve it, they would send it back to us for the public hearing.
Okay, so I'm, I'm looking at my calendar now. Okay, so we're at the 15th. The 28th is, is basically, you know, about two weeks away. You know, we, we would have to file, let's see, we'd have to file by the 21st. No, we'd have to file whatever two weeks is.
Well, I would, I would suggest contacting, asking Board of Selectmen if they would be willing to give us an extension.
Okay. So I think, but we won't make the 28th if we have, if we have to post it two weeks in advance.
Yeah, if the-
The public hearing would have to be advertised at least two weeks in advance, which means it's actually three weeks before we can have a public hearing.
But the public hearing would occur in October. So what you'd have to meet in the next couple of weeks is just a regular meeting of the board to take a vote on the, sending the language of the article to the select board. That doesn't need two weeks-
Right.
-notice. And I mean, I could have some draft language put together at the beginning of next week as a starting point. If you want. It's a, it's a simple article. It's basically just changing the language that defines the extent of the MCEOD district to include these properties. That's, that's the total extent of the article. We're not changing the content or the purpose of the MCDOD at all. We're just extending it over an additional group of properties. So it's, from a zoning article standpoint, it's a very simple article to put together.
Let's see. Bob, what do you think?
Well, I think, Dan, if you can get some language going, then we can bring town council in on it and have a discussion from there. Does that make sense?
Works for me.
All right. And so on this one, what, what would you be looking for us to do on this, Dan?
I guess I, I would say let's just hold for the moment. And if, if over the next week or so, with Bob and Nicole and we get some language together, then maybe at that point, Mr. Chairman, you could just convene a meeting, a special meeting for the purpose of just reviewing this language and taking a vote on whether to send it to the select board.
Okay, I'd ask the board, is, would you guys be willing to have a, a meeting for that specific thing? I can't see it being a, that big a deal if we just had a, a meeting for that. George? You're muted.
Yes, no problem.
Okay, great, thank you. Alan?
Yeah, that's fine.
Josh? Okay. And Boda? I don't know if Boda can hear us. Oh, you can, I can hear you now. Would you be able to come to another meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, great, super. All right, all right, so what we'll do is we'll, we'll do it where we're going to, you, we hear back from Dan and we'll discuss where we go from there. All right, number three would be Emerson Place definitive subdivision plan endorsement, which we actually did earlier, so that's all taken care of.
You just have to make a vote to endorse the final plans.
Okay, all right. I make a motion that we, where I make a motion that we endorse the final plans for the definitive subdivision for Emerson Place.
Second.
All right, the motion's been made and seconded. We'll do a roll call vote, so aye, George?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
And Josh?
Aye.
And Boda?
Aye.
Great. I'm doing, just so you know, I'm doing it how you guys show up on my screen, so it's not, I'm not doing it, I'm just looking across the way. Okay, next thing is the request for a waiver of site plan review approval from Cal from, I'm going to butcher the last name, Choba Engineering for the new gas station at 1105, 1115 Main Street. It's the Honeydew Donuts wants to go in there. And is there, is there a public hearing for that?
It's not a public hearing, but I'm not sure if anyone is here to represent them.
Okay.
You have a letter in your packets?
Yep, no, I'm digging through, sorry.
And Mike Jim Petro just requested that they send the waiver request because where it just covers the building permit for the Honeydew Donuts, where it's kind of separate from the whole site plan approval process. So Mike suggested that they submit the letter and if you want, you can read the letter into the record, it's up to you.
Nicole, do you have that letter in hand?
Yes.
Do you mind reading that for us?
To the Planning Board, Town and Millis Planning Board, 900 Main Street regarding 1005 and, excuse me, 1105 and 1115 Main Street, map 22 lots 90 and 129 Millis, Mass. Dear Board Members, please accept this letter as a request for waiver of site plan approval for the above referenced location. This location was previously approved by the Planning Board for 5,350 square foot convenience store, including a 1,200 square foot coffee shop with a drive-up window. The applicant has secured Honeydew Donuts to occupy the 1,200 square foot coffee shop. No changes to the previously approved site plans by this board were, are proposed or anticipated. All construction activities will take place inside the existing building to accommodate Honeydew Donuts layout and equipment per building permit issued by the Millis Building Department. We kindly ask if you placed on the next Planning Board agenda scheduled for September 15th, 2020. Please do not hesitate to contact me if you have any additional, if you need any additional documents. Sincerely, Haylam Choba, PE President.
All right, so basically it was, it was designed for a coffee shop, where they're putting a coffee shop in it. I, I personally feel fine that we just go ahead and say yes, we don't, we can waive the, the site plan review, site plan review approval. So does anyone else have any thoughts? Okay, no one else has anything to say, then I say we make a motion that we, we waive the site plan approval for 1105, 1115 Main Street.
Okay.
All right, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Great. All right, it was unanimous, thank you. At now eight ten, we're slightly behind, an informal discussion regarding Rivendell Woods definitive subdivision, 227 Causeway Street, from Greg Whalen. You're muted, Greg. You're still muted.
Okay, how's that?
Much better.
All right, so I just, I was, I'm interested in purchasing that property. I was told by the seller that when the subdivision was approved, that it was noted by the Planning Board that they would prefer that it wasn't a road, that it was a private way and the town would not have to maintain. I, I myself, from what I see up there, from what I see that's approved, they could be an absolute travesty for the, for the neighborhood. There's, I don't know if anybody's done a site walk up there, I think that would be very important. My, I, you know, the fact that my father was born in town, I grew up in town. I have a lot of history with that area and it's a beautiful piece of Causeway Street. Or it's maybe the final piece of Causeway Street before you get down to the Herter Estate and, and the Million Estate. And I feel as though the neighbor- And I feel as though the neighborhood, I, in, in my, my thoughts are that the less intrusive the whole project is, it's just very important for the neighborhood. I, I, I feel as though if I had a little bit of, um, uh, help from the Planning Board, my thought is that I want to design it so there isn't a tree of significance cut down on the property. I want the property to be as pleasingly aesthetic as possible. And the way it's, it's accepted now, there'd be a fifty-foot entrance and the whole area would change. I mean, I, I kind of equate it to Glen Ellyn, which is another travesty, but that's, that's a different story. So I'm just wondering if, if, um, if I came in, uh, for the, for the formally, um, and tried to, uh, make the entrance way as small as possible, a private way. I've spoken to the fire chief about it, I, I kind of know what has to be done, and I, I also have a real feel for, um, the people across the street. I mean, right now, if it was built the way it's designed, headlights would be shining through their windows straight on. I feel as though if the entryway is just pushed a little bit towards the Christian Herter Estate as much as possible. And I, and I've done a lot of, uh, measuring out there, and I can see that I could put in this private way and have the proper turnaround for emergencies and not have to cut one tree of significance. So I, that's kind of where I'm hoping we'll end up.
Okay, so what, just so I can clarify, so you want to take the approved subdivision and you want to change it? And so, um, you know, with that, you're gonna do, we have a, we will probably have to, because it'll be a subdivision, we'd have to review any changes that you make to it.
Yes, that's correct, that's correct, so I just-
It would have to be engineered. You'd have to go through and have drawings done, and we can't go ahead-
You would be the same engineers. You have the same engineers that approved the subdivision, uh, that had got it approved, would, would come back in front of you with a, uh, with a, uh, plan for a private way.
Okay, so now I'm going to defer back to Melissa. Um, so Melissa, it, without seeing any plan, um, and, you know, yeah, if we do a private way, uh, there was, the reason why the road was put in was because they had to do turnaround for the fire engines, that was the specific. So there are, there are things that we have to do. Um, and so, um, you know, what is your, you, you would probably just wait and see what they would come back with?
Yeah.
I, I kind of, what, I'm sorry.
Um, yeah, he, they, they would present a new plan and we'd review it. Um, you know, there are some other small subdivisions that the Planning Boards approved that have been, um, smaller roads. Um, the Dover, Dover Estates. You, I don't know if you remember that one, I think there was three, three lots? Forget if that one was three or four, but that was more of just a driveway, and then they had a hammerhead at the end, um, for the fire truck to turn around and come out. They, so, one of the things that we did comment on, on the Rivendell subdivision, um, through our review letter, was just asking the engineer to look at some alternatives for low-impact design and, um, you know, tightening up the road, but that it was their preference to go with the full build-out subdivision roadway layout. You know, that was driven by them, it, it wasn't, you know, something that the board required. So you could certainly come with a different design, um, that looked more like a private, or that was essentially a private road.
So we'd be, we'd be willing to look at, we can't guarantee anything. You'd have to come to us with a plan, you'd have to go through the process, so, and you know how that works. Right, so-
No problem, okay. I, I just wanted to get a feel for it, to, to, to see. Um, I, I think, uh, in my own mind, it'd be, it'd be an easy decision because it will be a lot less invasive on the, on the total property.
May I just, Mr. Chairman, may I just interrupt? So what you're speaking of is a modification to a definitive subdivision plan, which would require, require a new filing, notification to a butters, application fee, consultant review fee. I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page, right? Okay.
Yes, yes, no problem.
Is that correct, Melissa?
Correct.
And we'll have to go through the process, which will take, you know, that, you know how we work.
Yes.
Anything in one meeting.
Yes, yeah, no, no, no. In all, in all honesty, I'm hoping it'll be ready to go by spring, so we've got plenty of time.
Okay. All right, well, great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Um, and, let's see here, next, at eight-twenty, only slightly behind, um, we have an informal discussion with Regency at Glen Ellyn. Uh, Ted Merchant is going to give us an update.
Sure.
Ted or Ryan?
No, it's, it's gonna be me, Ryan and Sean are, are here to back me up if I need them. Um, but, uh, my, my name's Ted Merchant, I'm the Land Development Director with Toll Brothers. Um, and as I understand it, um, the, the board had some questions about, you know, what was going on, what our plans were, um, for a couple of key items. The, the first of which is the walking trail out there. Um, and that's something that we are working on right now. Um, we are trying to get it ready to open up, both to the public and to our residents. Um, we have mowed the trail, um, we have marked the trail, we have ordered signs for it, they are not yet installed. Um, and we, uh, are working on rehabbing two of the bridges that, uh, the trail utilizes, both for public and for private.
And can I just jump in on that, Ted? And on that one, uh, we had a conversation where, um, it, uh, the Homeowners Association is going to manage the trail and the bridges, um, in perpetuity for the town, uh, for use of the town residents.
That's correct.
Okay.
Um, so we are in the process of ordering materials for the bridges. They are actually due to arrive this week. So we're, we're really getting to work on, on the bridges, which are more or less the finishing touches, uh, of the trail themselves. So, um, I have a couple of sign renderings that we are intending to put on. I don't know if you guys are interested in seeing them, uh, or not, or we just want to-
Nope, move on.
Move along, okay. Um, al-also going along with that is the mowing of the open space. I know we are to mow it once a year. We are coming up, actually, we are in that timeframe right now. Um, we have somebody lined up to do it. I'm working with, with beta on exact limits of where to mow, so we can get it staked out and mowed here and then next. I think we have till October fifteenth, but hoping to do it before that. Uh, once, once we get things clarified as exactly what needs to be mowed, we will move right on to doing that. Any, any questions on the trails and open space while, uh, while I'm on topic?
Nope, that was just, I, there's been a lot of, uh, people asking about it, and there's a lot of walkers out in the area, that's why we were following up on it.
Understood, and, and, yeah, we, we are starting to have almost all of our residents moved into our first phase. Um, so we, we want to get it open for them as well as the public. So we're, we're moving in that direction.
To the chair?
Oh. Yep, I, I can't see who it is, oh, Melissa, sorry, go ahead.
Um, one of the things that Ted and I had talked about is they're obviously going to stake out the limits of where to mow the meadows, so they're not, you know, mowing too much or getting into the wetland area or anything like that. Um, and they'll, they'll, they'll stake that out before they have the guys go out and mow. But something, I guess, to think about is, um, for future, if there's any permanent, any more permanent staking of that area, um, you know, to get it done for this season temporarily is fine, but just if there's something that the board, um, wants to see so that when, you know, the landscaper changes, when eventually this isn't Toll Brothers that's responsible for mowing anymore, it's then becomes the Homeowners Association's responsibility, um, you know, maintaining those limits with some sort of visual, um-
Would, would something like a, like a fence post work? I mean, it doesn't have, the thing is, once they mow, we, that, the other stuff's gonna grow in. So if they did like a simple, you know, four-foot post, uh, fence post, that would delineate the area, that would be easy to do. Um, might, might be something, by the time, you know, if you go through five or six years, you're not gonna, you know, you'll know where it is because everything's gonna grow in. Would that be something like that, maybe?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, and we, I can, I can work with Melissa and, and come up with some ideas of, of what exactly-
Low check.
I don't know if the board wants to see it, um, once, once we finalize something, but we can-
No, if Melissa's fine with it, we should be fine.
Okay, so she, she and I'll discuss that. I, like she said, I don't know that it's gonna happen this year, um, but we'll, we'll get it staked out and mowed. Um, the other item that was brought up, um, unfortunately, maybe two weeks ago, we had a contractor come in and work on a Sunday unbeknownst to either the town or us. Um, and that, that, uh, brought up the issue of getting permission to work on off-hours, Sundays and holidays. Um, so we've worked with, uh, Bill McPischner to come up with a form that he has okayed at this point, uh, for anybody to work off-hours. So I, I think we are all on the same page there.
Yeah, I think on, on that, it was, uh, basically, it's internally for you guys, um, you know, you have, you know, the three hundred people there or two hundred people there at this point in time, and so I think it would be bet, in your best interest to make sure that they don't have guys out there with hammers banging, um, so.
Yeah, we, we will hear about it right away, one way or the other, so.
There was one of the, one other item I do want to bring up, and it was, uh, just so, we, you and I have talked about it, um, one of, there was a, a question asked about, uh, a gate issue. Um, we did have, uh, beta look at it, um, the gate itself, there was no issue with the gate. Um, it was all, um, within, it was legal, it was appropriate. Um, so I just want to let, we're, I'm just putting in the record that we did, uh, get that, uh, question. We fielded the question, we answered the question. Together as a team, we solved it, um, and decided there was no issue. Um, so, um, we can go from there, from that. All right, so it's great, it's great to see that you're selling them, and, uh, I, I live nearby, so there's, uh, there's gaggles of people walking up and down the street, so they all seem happy. Um, so, you know, keep on building them, selling them, so, uh, we can, uh, get it built out and you guys can, uh, wrap up another successful project.
You got it, thanks for it.
Great, appreciate you coming in, thank you. All right, um, and now, at eight-thirty, uh, Bigelow Farm Proposed Solar Overlay District, brief, uh, brief presentation from Doug Pope from Pope Energy.
Hi, how are you all? Thank you for taking the time this evening. And, um, Camille, do you want me to share my screen? Uh, how do, how do I do this here?
Yes, if you can share your screen, that would be great.
Okay. Uh, let's see, there we go, right there.
Yep, we can see it.
You can see it, okay. Okay, great. Can you still see it?
Yep.
Okay, great. Um, this is a, uh, the property is a Sixtuff Road in Millis. It's owned by, um, Amanda Bigelow of Bigelow Farms. Uh, she and Cornelius, uh, Morninghand have expressed an interest in having agricultural solar installed on their property. They currently farm the land, uh, for, um, uh, for cattle. And, um, it, the, the property is, is, you know, is fully, is fully grazed, and agricultural solar would be, would have the, low, because it's cattle, would have the, the panels ten feet off the grade, uh, so that the cattle, because the cattle jump on top of one another. And that would be, uh, two feet in excess of the current regulations for agricultural solar promulgated by D U R under the SMART program, which is a solar program. They're specifically encouraging dual-use of solar and agriculture. And that, that dual-use is a twenty-year obligation. And, um, so if, if we were to, had the ability to rezone this to, uh, with a solar overlay district, uh, for agricultural solar, uh, we would be, uh, on there, we have a, a twenty-five-year lease with, um, the Bigalos with two five-year renewals. Uh, we would have a twenty-five-year pilot with the, uh, the Town of Millis. Um, and, uh, we would have an obligation to farm land for twenty years with D U R. So the, Amanda, who's forty-five, and I believe Cornelius is somewhat pushing over sixty, they have expressed an interest in continuing to farm the land. If they, for whatever reason, due to health or business purposes, whatever, if they were unable, if they were unable or unwilling to farm the land, then we would take the responsibility, uh, to, uh, continue to graze the land and would bring in farmers to do just that. They, this is, this is two, there are two parcels here. Now parcel number one is their property in, in, um, in Millis. Parcel number two is their property in Norfolk. Um, Nor- in, in Norfolk, there is a path for them to install solar there. In Millis, there is not a path, so we need a sol- solar overlay district to accomplish that. This is a mass GIS map, uh, showing you, in the dark green is the, uh, prime farmland soils, uh, that are recognized by D U R, as are the farmland, the lighter yellow, uh, farmland soils of statewide importance. And these are, these are key aspects in conforming with the SMART regulations for agricultural solar. When they did redo the SMART regulations this year, and they just happened, I think it was July, July twenty-second, um, after two years. Um, they, for all intents and purposes, have, um, written out standard solar, which is right behind me here. Um, they've written that out, so the only thing that's gonna be feasible is agricultural solar. But these soil types are absolutely critical to installing agricultural solar in Massachusetts. Um, within that, within the regulations, the, um, they've moved, they have a website, D U R has constructed a website, it's a solar, solar evaluation site that specifically indicates biomass two areas, uh, for the, the prime, the critical, uh, environmental areas. And so that, um, while, uh, while they, they specifically allow, um, agricultural solar in the biomass two area, uh, they do not allow standard solar. Uh, what I've tried to do here is to, um, and I just revised it today with, um, is to give you an idea, is to, the idea here is to have a large enough piece of land that you can have a setback large enough, um, that, you know, it's not gonna impact people's view from the street. Um, so we've sort of pegged it at either twelve or fifteen acres. Um, you would either, you would have a buffer from an existing road of two hundred and fifty feet, unless there was a, a buffer of mature trees, which, that then you could, the planning board could reduce it down to, to a hundred feet. Um, the, um, the physical location of panels would be a hundred feet from a property bound, unless that property bound is a common bound, that is, is indicated on this, uh, type of property. Um, or unless it was a fifty-foot tree buffer. Uh, again, the idea is that, that, that you could have in this solar overlay district, um, and, and people would, the town and the landowners here in town would be able to take advantage of solar, um, and renewable generation. Um, uh, but you wouldn't be able to necessarily be able to see it. Um, what would not be allowed would be prohibited solar in, in the biomass two area if it was not a, it was, unless it was an agricultural piece of land. Um, and this is all within the state regulations. And then you can see the side evaluation tool, which I showed you, uh, previously.
Uh, Doug, can I ask a question?
Uh, Doug, can I ask you a question?
Please do.
While you're going on on this, so.
Sure.
We have, uh, we have a solar bylaw in town.
Yes.
And basically, right now, we have it so that large-scale solar can be approved per a special permit. Um, so, uh, my question is, I'm asking is, you're asking us to make a district here where we already have it in our zoning that you could do this, you just have to come to us for a special permit?
It's allowed by, it's specifically allowed by special permit?
Yeah, we, large solar is allowed by special permit.
Uh, excuse me, Rich, that's only in the IP or IP-2 district.
Ah, okay.
Okay, that's what I, yeah, so in your chart, that's word. Um, so, I, the issue, one of the issues here is that to meet the SMART regulations, to receive the incentive, which means to allow the solar period, you need to have zoning that is explicitly allowing solar to exist in town. And the reason for that is that there's a, there's a chapter, uh, chapter 43, which says, "No city or town shall prohibit the installation of solar." Well, less sophisticated towns, particularly out west, felt they were getting hammered by this. And so, they, they beat up on the governor, and the governor beat up on D O E R to change it so that, uh, that, that it would, in my comment letter says this one, is part of the program, that it would have to be specifically allowed in town. So, we need a specific district, a specific zoning, and a solar overlay district would accomplish that. So, what I tried to do, and I, I, um, given the fact that you, uh, that I know that, uh, spot zoning is frowned upon, this is the, the easiest way for me to do this will be option number one, which gives the land on the other side of the river for, uh, for a solar overlay district. Now, that would be something that could be done hopefully this year. Option number two expands that a little bit, as does option number, uh, option 2A. And what this does is it focuses on the agricultural solar land that is available.
Okay, wait, one more thing on this, and sorry to keep on interrupting. So, when you were saying to get done this year, so I'm not sure if you were listening earlier, but, um, you know, we would have to, we'd have to get this to town meeting, to put in a new zoning thing. So, our town meeting is fall, and at this point in time, uh, it would be too late to do that. So, it would have to be, uh, next spring would be our next town meeting.
Okay, so even if we helped you all run the language, would that be of help? Because I heard the 28th.
We, yeah, but they, we already had a placeholder in the, um, for that, and, um, and so at this point in time, uh, I, we cannot do that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
If I may?
Yep, go ahead, Bob.
Doug is Bob Weiss, and in addition to being the Economic Development Planning Director, I'm also the Energy Manager down.
Congratulations.
Let me, as you know, that, uh, Millis has been a, uh, a green community since 2015. Okay, what, um, Camille had been alluding to is part of being a green community is we, the town delineated, a district where it can have solar, uh, ground-mounted solar. That will be in the IP-2 district, which of course this doesn't fall into. Um, we did attempt, uh, to expand that, um, a couple of years ago, um, ground-mounted solar beyond the IP-2 district. And, uh, with the town meeting voted that down, uh, pretty much overwhelmingly. Um, we have been, we did one, uh, in 2018, we went beyond the district only because, uh, there was a parcel that was half in the IP-2 and partly not, so we were able to expand a little bit beyond that. So, uh, I, I would, um, think that it's going to be kind of a crush to get any kind of, anything done, uh, for the town meeting. And the town meeting is pretty sophisticated, I think, when it comes to, uh, to solar. I mean, this is one of the reasons why they wanted to have in these, in the IP-2 district. Uh, we do have a committee, uh, the Energy Committee, which you might want to make the presentation to also. And may even begin there. So, I, I would suggest maybe that's the route you want to go. I don't know, if you're in a big hurry to do this, uh, well, Mr. Chairman, you can explain what the process is, and I think you've been doing a good job of that. But just so, you should know that we have tried to do, to expand, um, the solar, not with an overlay district, but with, uh, just expanding the delineated district, uh, that the town chose.
Thank you for that, Bob. Um, could I, um, I'm just going to ask a general question. Um, so when you initially said you were thinking of doing, um, the solar with a certain-sized parcel of land, and, and, and would we, and then probably Nicole might be, or Josh might be able to help me out with this, is there a way that we could change, make the zoning so if you did have a large parcel of land, um, you could do a, um, a, you know, a solar, uh, large solar in there?
Let me see if I can do a new share, let's see if I can find it here.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
You could develop a bylaw that, and not have it applied to a specific zone. You could write the bylaw to apply to the entire town, provided that it met whatever the, you know, requirements were.
Could we add that to our solar? I mean, because could we take this where if you had, say you had, you know, 15-acre minimum, and could we write a bylaw that we could add to our solar bylaw?
Um, I haven't looked at the solar bylaw that we currently have, um, recently. I mean, you, you could, that is, I mean, it's, it's the large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic, whatever you pronounce it, installation. Um, you know, you, you could have something amended to that, you could add on to that, that states if it were for agriculture, if it was within agricultural property, um, and had so many acres and met these requirements as far as you have to, um, include 20 years, you know, you have to commit to 20 years of agriculture. I mean, all of that could be added, it doesn't, you could do it that way as opposed to saying limiting it to a specific district.
Well, that's what I'm saying, is if, and maybe not, you know, and I'll let Doug speak in a minute, but if we, you know, if there's a property owner that has a large amount of property and they wanted to do either, uh, you know, a large-scale solar or a, um, or agricultural, um, and there was enough, you know, distance screening, if they put it in the woods and no one can see it.
Oh, absolutely, it doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to be limited to a particular district. You can apply it to the, you could say it can go anywhere in town, provided it meets the following criteria. Yes, you can do that.
Yeah, all right, so go ahead, Doug, sorry.
Yes, can you see what I, the new screen I just put up?
Yep.
Yes.
116, okay. This is, uh, on the idea of that Nicole was speaking to. I pulled up, um, all the parcels that would be 12 and 15 acres. And so, engraved up to 500 acres. And so, this is what you would have, so if you have, uh, all of these, and all of these parcels, they would all have to be, you know, so many feet away from the road, there'd often be a boundary, so you'd have enough land that you wouldn't be looking at it, but yet you'd have landowners in town that could take advantage of it.
Okay.
Okay? And this is, this would be for, it's not a log. For some reason, it's slowed, I don't know why. That's 15 acres. And this is, for the conservation folks, this is the BiOMAP 2 area that would be excluded for everything except for agricultural use. So, you wouldn't have stand, be able to put standard solar in the area to the left, the area to the upper right, and the area to the right. Those are all BiOMAP 2 areas. And unless it's on, unless it has agricultural, uh, soils, which are delineated on this map here, um, you wouldn't be able to install solar in those BiOMAP 2 areas. So, I think that there's lots to think about.
No, so I think, you know, you've got some good points. I mean, so the question I would ask you is, could you, you know, could you, uh, maybe work with us? And maybe we have it where it's an agricultural solar and a large parcel solar? Um, so we could, uh, you know, we could do, uh, if you'd be willing to, you know, get us some information on that, so we could put a bylaw together, I'd say we could talk about it.
Great.
Okay, all right, Bob, you could work with that too, as Mr. Energy King?
Yeah, I'd be glad to, uh, Doug, who are you working with in Norfolk?
Um, the, oh, boy, uh, I'm great with, uh, I'm lousy with names. Um, I can get that to you in a minute.
Well, you got my email address, I think, so.
Okay, what's your name again, sir?
It's R. Weiss. R W E I S S at millisma.gov. So, it's Bob Weiss.
Okay, so Doug, what we're going to do is that we've got to, we're going to wrap up on this, but, um, so what I would say is, um, get us some information on this. I think this is something that, you know, I think we should look at, and, um, you know, it'll be the same thing. We'll want to kick it around and get it to some form, and, you know, we could get it to the spring meeting.
Great, we appreciate it.
All right, no, great, thank you for coming, I appreciate the time.
Have a good night.
All right, um, and now being 8:45 or somewhat thereafter, um, we have some, uh, we have some, the Clyde Brown School had some minor field changes that we, I want to walk through. Uh, Wayne Clucko from the, uh, Building Committee is unavailable tonight because they had a meeting. Um, and I just have to grab the sheet here, one second. Okay, so, um, so on the Clyde Brown School, um, along the way, there were some minor changes that were made, uh, which were reviewed by, um, Beta, and, uh, they've been through the town, they've been approved, um, for, you know, zoning and all that stuff. Um, we have a set of ASBIL drawings that, uh, reflect, uh, changes to, um, layout of a fence, uh, pickleball court, um, that was added versus a tennis court. And so, in there, um, the visible site changes, with this, some sidewalk changes. Um, there was, uh, new drainage, uh, that was added. We added the pickleball courts. Um, and so, uh, basically what the, um, ESBC was asking for was, um, an approval of the, um, planning board for basically field changes that it took to build the, um, school. And I think that also included the, um, land swap.
Chairman?
Yes.
What is the pavilion demolition?
That was my question.
Uh, that was the, uh, the pavilion. That was.
That's not.
That was, yeah, no, that was a change. So, remember the bus, the bus stop that they had?
Oh, okay.
So, they, uh, at one point in time, they were going to move it. Um, and they didn't move it because it was, it cost more to move it than it would be to knock it down, so they ended up knocking it down.
Okay.
Um, so basically, the, uh, the, uh, Permanent Building Committee and Clyde Brown are looking for us to approve all, uh, field changes associated with the project.
Okay.
So, um, I make a motion that, um, that all minor field changes, um, necessary to build the Clyde Brown School are, uh, approved by the planning board.
Second.
All right, the motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? I see Nicole Squinton.
Yeah, it's because I'm getting a headache and I can't, I'm just trying to read with my computer.
All right, um, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor? I, I'll do it by roll count, uh, also, I, George, I, Nicole?
Aye.
Alan? And Josh?
Aye.
Josh is in his pajamas, that's why we can't see him anymore.
That's exactly right. Strategic, strategic blackout.
So, the other, the other thing would be the zoning bylaw subdivision rules and regulations, which at 9:12 at night, I think we would be okay with pushing that off to the next meeting. Would that be okay with you, Nicole?
Considering it's either that or you need to give me a three-minute break to, to the little girls' room? Yes, I'm okay with that.
Okay, so why don't we push that off? Um, and, um, I would like to make a motion that we approve the regular session minutes remote from August 11th.
Second.
All right, the motion's been made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, great, uh, I make a motion that we approve the executive session minutes remote from August 11th, 2020.
Aye.
Oh, you have to second, there we go, now you guys are getting tired, usually it's me. Uh, so the motion is being made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great. Um, our next scheduled meeting is October 13th, uh, 2020. Uh, and then, uh, Camille, did you need us to set a November meeting?
If possible, that would be great.
All right, as long as we do it in less than three minutes, because Nicole has to go, and I'm going to be right behind her.
Believe me, me too.
All right, so November, uh, we have the 10th, the 17th?
The 10th.
10th, 10th is fine with me, is everyone okay with the 10th?
Yeah, I'm fine.
November 10th it is then, all right. And then if we do end up having to have another meeting, uh, to discuss Dan American's thing, otherwise we can schedule that on the 10-13 agenda.
Okay, that sounds like a plan. All right, um, and, uh, I assume, uh, as much as we'd all like to, uh, go over a few other, any other things? Uh, I, I'm ready to go eat my dinner.
No.
So, I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, the motion's been made and seconded, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, all right, good night, everybody, thank you.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Thanks, Camille.